Okay, Mr. Chair, I believe you're good.
Okay, good. All right, we'll go ahead and call the June 2nd Lake County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. As always, we will stand for a moment of silence. Supervisor Scott?
I think this morning we need to have a moment of silence for our nation as we need to be the agents of healing. A quote from James Baldwin, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced." And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any extra items not appearing on the posted agenda?
None.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Okay, sure, looking for an answer. All right, approval, moving right along. Approval of consent agenda. Consent agenda items are usually non-controversial. Are there any items that need to be pulled from the board? And I did get an email for two, item 5.5 by Supervisor Sabatier, and also item 5.15 need to be pulled. Are there any other items from the board that need to be pulled? All right, hearing none. Are there any from the public that need to be pulled? Jake, can you open up the room?
Yes, I will open up the room. The floor is unmuted.
All right. Are there any items that need to be pulled from the public from the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, Jake, hearing none. Go ahead and bring it back to the board. Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.4, 5.6 through 5.14, and 5.16 through 5.17.
All right, a motion in a second. Supervisor Scott, can we do the roll call, please?
Supervisor Sabatier?
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall?
Hi.
Supervisor Scott?
Hi.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I know that we had to reach out to a couple of folks to take those items up.
Todd Metcalf is in the room if you would like to do five.
Yep, let's address item 5.5, please. Go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
So, I was looking through this and I was thinking economically what's going on. I know a lot of our schools are starting to look at cuts. I'm sure when we get to our budget, we're going to be looking at potential cuts. Just overall, our state, we know, has gone from a $48 billion surplus to now an $18 billion negative economy or negative budget. And so, I feel that when I see an item where I believe that there are possibilities of bid wars out there for us getting the best bang for our buck, that we need to make sure and do that. And item 5.5 kind of put up a flag for me and I thought maybe this is one of those that I don't want to approve to say we don't need to put this out to bid. I would like to see this go out to bid to make sure that we get the best bang for our buck since we need to make sure and tighten our belts anywhere and everywhere that we can. So, this is why I wanted to bring it to the board to see if that was something the rest of the board felt the same about. And I did have a conversation with Mr. Metcalf, Director Metcalf from Behavioral Health, and he agreed with me, but I don't think it should be a unilateral, just my comment. I think it needs to be from the board and not just me.
Okay, I'd like to hear from, go ahead, Todd.
I do agree with Bruno. You know, this was one of these things that had been in the works for the last couple of months and obviously our economy was vastly different a few months ago. So, I thank Supervisor Sabatier for bringing this to my attention. And I support, I mean, I'll do whatever the board wishes, but I think it's probably a good idea, as much as I hate to drag this out any longer, to put it out to bid.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Brown?
Well, so, I don't think this should be, at this point, a board decision. I appreciate Bruno bringing it up, but I think it sounds like that's what Todd's recommendation is, so I would support his recommendation on this.
Yeah, I'm in agreement. If you'd like to pull this off and do a bidding process, absolutely, that's in your good catch. Let's hope we get a better deal and you get a good product. So, all right, yeah, if you want to pull this off, I completely agree. Todd? Supervisor Crandall, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask Director Metcalf, is this something that's urgent or is it something that you've just been working on and it's something, it's like a kind of a normal operative type of expense? It's not something that's just like urgent, right?
Well, I mean, I don't mean to say it's not urgent. I mean, we're trying to open up a new location for our children's mental health team in the city of Clearlake. So, this is the one thing that's kind of holding it up. But in light of the way things are, I mean, we've done a very soft reopening of our offices, so it could certainly wait. I mean, I'm hoping that it can be fast-tracked as quickly as possible, but in all fairness, I think it would be in our best interest to see if we can come in with a lower bid. Otherwise, Supervisor Sabatier, I guess you'll be doing the work. But I can't find, we can't get anybody to bid in any lower, so.
I've crawled in addicts before.
Okay. Supervisor Scott, if you have a comment when we're?
No, just I agree with Todd. As long as this is not an urgent item and it's not going to hold up anybody from receiving services, go ahead and agree with that.
Okay. All right, if there's no more comments from the board, go ahead and open it up for a comment in the room. Are there any comments on item 5.5?
All right, I will open the floor here. All right, the floor is open. If you'd like to comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none. Jake, go ahead and close it up, bring it back to the board.
All right.
So, we, I guess no action needs to be taken. We're just pulling, you're pulling this item and doing the bidding process. So, thank you very much, Director Metcalf. Thank you, Bruno.
Thank you.
We'll move to item, no action needed from the board, so we'll move to item 5.15.
And, Mr. Chair, I'll ask that we wait on that one until I hear from the treasure tax collector.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Excellent. So, we'll go ahead and move right along into public input. And I don't think we have any today, but I will ask a question. Do we have any public input today on items that are not appearing on the agenda?
I have not received any regular input by email. Johanna, have you received any by email?
No, I have not.
And so, it would just be a matter of opening the room then, Mr. Chair.
So, we'll go ahead and open up the room, Jake. If anyone has public input on an item that is not appearing on today's agenda.
All right, the floor is open. If you'd like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, go ahead and close the room up, bring it back to the board. All right, thank you, Jake. We'll move on to item number 6.2, our 9:02 a.m. item. Consideration of update of COVID-19 from our Health Services Department, Dr. Gary Pace. You're still on mute, Doc.
How about now?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, good. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Mr. Chair, good morning, Supervisors. Thank you for this opportunity once again to talk about how we're doing in the county with the COVID. Let's see, trying to get this set. So, we are starting to see more cases. We're up to 30 cases now. We got a couple, a couple new ones yesterday, late in the evening. We, there was a question last week around the way we were reporting some of the data, so we've adjusted that. So, last week we were up to, I think it was 23 towards the end of the week. We bumped that back down to 21 because a couple of the cases had actually left the area, relocated back to their home county. And so, there was concern that they may be getting counted twice in two different counties. And so, we just eliminated those folks from our current data structure. If you look on the portal that we use, there's a category that says something like relocated out of county or something like that. So, those folks are out of the total now. So, where we're at now is 30 cases we've had total in the county. One of them is in the jail and one of the previous cases that was identified about a week ago got sicker and is now in the hospital. But otherwise, everybody else is stable and in a home situation, isolating. So, part of what we're seeing is clusters. We have not really identified widespread community transmission yet, but there seems to be different cases popping up around and then clusters that seem to we're identifying around. And part of that is because of the way we do this. When we identify somebody, we do the case identification, case investigation, and then find out who they've been in contact with during the infectious period, contact those people when it's possible, and test them. And then, if anybody's positive there, then we kind of continue out the web. And so, what we're finding is that, you know, it is fairly contagious. It's pretty easy to transmit. And so, when you find a case, there's often a handful of other cases around it. Then we try to get all these people to isolate and so that we can sort of stop the spread through the community. So far, we're not really picking up signs of widespread community transmission. There's not a lot of pressure on the hospitals at this point. And when we are picking up cases, most of them were able to trace back to other known cases or they seem to have gotten it from out of the county. You know, a lot of people are asking about demographic information, where it is in the county, what age issues and things like that. And we're, what I've been trying to do consistently here is wait until we get to 50 cases before I start publishing any of that information. The way Sonoma County did it was they waited till 100, but since we're smaller, I think 50 is reasonable. The idea is that we're trying to protect people's identity. We want people to be willing to come forward. If they felt that they were at risk of being identified by their friends or neighbors, they may not be willing, they may not be very forthcoming. And the most important thing that we're interested in here is preventing the widespread transmission. Some people will say, well, if I knew it was in my community, I might be more careful. And I would just like to say, you know, if it's not in your community right now, in your local community right now, it will be soon and you need to take the right precautions. That's really the way we have to think about this. The other thing about this is, well, especially with all the things going on around the country right now about racial and economic injustice, there definitely is people of color, people of lower economic resources seem to be much more at risk of getting this infection and of doing worse when they do get it. For example, in Sonoma County, right now, about 70% of the cases are in the Latino population, where there's only about 25% of the population is Latino. And in the children, it's something like 90% of the cases that are under 18 are in the Latino population. So, you know, I think part of this is really not so much ethnic as it is work and access to medical care and things like that. So, what, I think one of the ways to think about this is the essential workers, the people that are, that can't work from home, that don't have a whole lot of sick pay if they're not feeling good, that, you know, have to go to work even if they don't feel comfortable with the safety conditions in the workplace. They're the ones that seem to be getting sick more, getting infected more regularly. And then, people with underlying medical conditions and the elders are the ones that get much sicker. But, you know, so I think it's just important to recognize that, that the people that are in the grocery store serving and the people that are at the gas station working and things like that are the ones that are really at great risk because of the frequent contact with people and the close contact and that they maybe don't have some of the choices that other folks have in terms of how to protect themselves. I think another question that's come up a couple times is what kind of other impacts are we seeing locally around this outbreak and some of the things we've had to do to put in place? For example, are there more mental health calls? Are there more, is there more homelessness? And so, I checked in with Todd through Behavioral Health and he felt that neither of those are seeming, they're seeing a rise on in terms of calls needing mental health support or more support for homelessness. But there do seem to be more requests for substance abuse services right now. So, you know, I'm not sure how to make sense of all that. It may be that people are just dying to lay low and, but anyhow, that we are not seeing a big spike in mental health requests and, but we are seeing some for substance abuse services. So, the testing situation continues along. Barely is working with us and it's, we're continuing to get, you know, decent numbers of there. We're not at capacity yet. We could test a lot more people. So, if people are feeling like they want to be tested, there's more than enough capacity at this point. We are currently two days a week in Clearlake, Monday, Tuesday, and every other Wednesday in Clearlake, Thursday, Friday in Lakeport, and every other Wednesday in Middletown. The Lakeport site is going to move location. It was down by the lake on Fifth. On Fifth, it's going to move out to the college now because of all the boating activity on the lake. And we're working on a walk-up strategy. A lot of folks have challenges navigating the signup process and getting an appointment because it has to be done online the day before. And so, we're trying to come up with a way for folks that are not comfortable with the internet or don't really want to do it that way, where they can get it through the Health Department. So, people can just go to the website and if you can't figure that out, give us a call at the Health Department and we'll try to get you plugged in. We are having some trouble getting some volunteers to help. I mean, basically, this is a volunteer run thing. We have, you know, we have a very small staff at the Health Department and we are staffing it a lot with volunteers doing both. Some of the support, like the traffic control and things like that, and also the swabbing. Chief Cepeda and some of the EMTs have been incredibly valuable asset for us. They've really stepped up and helped us do this. And one of our nurses, Lynn Brooks, has been very active in doing this and we've had some nursing volunteers. But we could really use some help, especially with the clinical piece. And we're not getting, you know, the hospitals and the clinics have been, I think, because of the economics of what's going on there, haven't been able to provide people to help us. So, if anybody out there is a clinical person or knows of some people that might be able to help us, that would be very useful to provide this really important community service. If we can't keep the number of test options up to a high enough level, it becomes a problem in terms of the continued reopening process. So, we are having a whole screening and surveillance strategy. The state is now requiring that all the nursing homes get every, all the residents and the staff tested in the month of June. And so, this is a big, you know, they're needing some help to how to coordinate this and do all this. And so, we're very involved in trying to help them pull this off because it's really, it's like something like 600 people that need to be tested and they can't, they're not people that can go to the testing site. So, we have to coordinate that through there. The jail, now we have this one case out at the jail. We're doing extensive contact tracing out there. The jail staff has been really, really helpful and working well in terms of trying to contain this and make sure we don't get into a situation where there's a big outbreak there. You know, the problem is, is in a jail situation with people coming and going all the time and there's a lot of space limitations that it's pretty easy to imagine once somebody gets infected that they can get in and spread it around. So, we're working about containing that outbreak, but also about getting a coherent screening strategy that we can test asymptomatic people or that everybody at intake coming in. The homeless population is another high-risk population that we're looking at. Getting testing done in the homeless facilities. We're working on getting some set up with the farm workers, as we talked about before. We had another meeting last week and Supervisor Brown mentioned talking to the packing shed folks and we did that. And so, we're working on getting a good strategy together with that as, trying to get it set up before the season really starts. Another part of this I'm thinking about is how to do the essential workers, how to get the grocery store workers and the other people that are out there on the front lines in the community, access to testing. So, we're trying to message that, people that are listening now. If you can let your friends and family know that are working in those settings that we want to help them get tested and we want to help them figure out how to navigate the Barely site, which is free. It doesn't cost anything. So, and if you have an appointment, it can go pretty quick. So, I think the contact tracing and the isolation part, we talked about that a little bit. It's, you know, as we start getting more and more cases, it becomes a more challenging situation, more labor-intensive. We have a team of volunteers that's helping us with that and so far, we're managing pretty well. We have had a few people in the hotel because they weren't able to isolate at home and so, they've been using the hotel room, which has been very helpful. So, the last part I want to talk about is the reopening process. You know, there's been a lot of changes in the last week or so. We, last week, we, the governor made some changes, but we also, so one thing I did last week at the end of the week was the masking order. Originally had had a situation where people needed to get a doctor's note to say that they didn't need the mask and there were some complications with that. And so, we just eliminated that. And so, the new order basically says if, the order is that people should wear a mask. If they're unable to wear a mask, they need to social distance by six feet at all times when they're inside a business establishment. Because again, the importance of the mask is not to protect the person that's wearing it, it's to protect the other people. So, if somebody's unable to wear the mask, it doesn't put them at increased risk. It puts everybody else at increased risk and so, they need to stay six feet away from everybody else in their interactions in order to protect those people. The, so the governor made a bunch of changes last week, including churches, hair salons, and those things have opened now in our county. And as far as I know, they're going fine. We do get some complaints when people are feeling like some of the businesses aren't following through well and we'll have some contact with them or, and/or we send it over to the supervisors and they go out and make contact with them. And it seems like things have been going reasonably well. When I've been out and about, it seems like the vast majority of people are wearing masks and are trying to do the right thing. And we really do appreciate that. The governor supposedly is going to come out with some recommendations about gyms and exercise classes later this week. I think there's also going to be some more discussion about children's activities and like camps and summer activities for the kids. I'd really like to encourage people that are running those sorts of activities to contact us or think through this because we really want to encourage some of these summertime activities to be happening in a safe way so that the kids can get out of the house and off the screens. The shelter-in-place order from the governor is still in effect. So, that basically means that people should not be traveling to the area from out of town. People in Lake County shouldn't be traveling elsewhere except for essential business. People should not be coming to campgrounds and vacation rentals and hotels for vacation and for pleasure. It's, that's still being limited. The governor is supposedly coming out with some recommendations about that, but it may be a couple weeks. You know, really, the two things that are the most worrisome from the point of view of public health is travel from areas, from high-incidence areas to low-incidence areas, which would be people coming from the Bay Area or Southern California up to Lake County would be strongly discouraged because that's where, that's how the infection spreads. That's how we've seen it spread consistently. And the other thing is large groups. So, any kind of big activities where a lot of people are close together, these protests are a good example of that, are concerning in terms of the possible spread. And so, you know, thinking about tourism and hotels and vacation rentals is just something that, from a public health point of view, will probably be later on down the road. If we continue to see some stability here with the rates of infection and the rates of hospitalization and everything, I know they would like to open some of that up this summer, but how that's going to look, what the timing is, et cetera, is still up in the air. But I think at this point, it's just important to be clear that that is not permitted. The triggers, we're, there are some triggers in place. There's, the state is now going to be kind of putting together, I don't know, I guess for lack of a better word, it's like a scorecard, how we're doing with some of the specific triggers county by county. And they're going to be updating that weekly and sending it out. I think it will come out tomorrow. I saw a draft of it and, you know, we're doing fine at this point. Our numbers are fine. If the state does see that there's some problems, they'll reach out to the county and talk to them about what the issues are. Are there any specific things that need to be rethought or changed or do they need to slow down? I mean, from my point of view, we are doing okay. We're definitely seeing an increase in the infections. We are managing. The hospitals seem to be managing. The jail did a good job in sort of controlling the situation there and responding in a good way. So, I think that's what I'm hoping for during the summer is that we are going to continue to see ongoing cases, but that we're able to manage it. Now, that can change at any point in time, you know, as, as the impact of Memorial Day weekend comes through, we may see some rise, we may not. We may just continue to percolate along like this. As people get more comfortable and less using the different social distancing tactics and the masks and things, we may see a rise. We're not, you know, we don't know for sure. So, we're, at this point, we're going to continue moving along, monitoring all the, all the different parameters and making sure that we're doing okay. The next opening phase is going to be on Thursday, so two days from now, June 4th. We're scheduled to open for indoor dining with social distancing. And so, that's, unless something dramatic happens in the next day or two, we will go ahead and have that open up on Thursday. And so, hopefully, the restaurants have been preparing and are the ones that want to open. And hopefully, the people that are interested in going out and dining will take the proper precautions. I think a lot of folks from the vulnerable populations will probably not want to do that or a lot of people aren't going to feel comfortable at this point going to restaurants. But that will be a possibility. So, the last thing I want to talk about is just the kind of overall strategy from the state. It's been very confusing. There's been some mixed messaging, but I think they've gotten clear about it now. And the way they're talking about this is we are moving into stage three. So, as a state, we are able to move into stage three. The counties that have the variants, which we are one of them, can move into stage three. But there's a caveat. What happens is, is the governor will, and his people will offer guidance on a specific sector like they did with the churches or like they did with the hair salons. And once that sector guidance comes out, if the health officer feels like it's okay to open, then we can open in that one sector. If the health officer feels like we're not ready to do that yet or we need to be slower, then we'll hold off. So, and so, different counties are doing this different ways. Like Sonoma County is still not moving into opening indoor restaurants at this point. They were going to do that and then they slowed it down because they've had such a spike in cases and caused all kinds of controversy, but that's what they decided. But that's what they decided to do. Uh, Lassen did the same thing where they were moving forward, but because of some cases and some other issues, they, they basically slowed it down. So that's where the health officer comes in, basically saying, it doesn't look safe. It doesn't look like a good idea to do that. We're gonna have to slow it down, but we can't even go that way until the governor puts out the guidance about that sector. Uh, so at this point in stage three, the, the two sectors that are opened up are the churches and the hair salons. And we have gone ahead and opened the door to those. Um, and then we'll see how it goes. We, we're getting this kind of slow bump in cases, but again, we're managing. So I think we'll just go from there. What comes after Thursday? I'm not exactly sure what's next. I think the gyms will be coming and, uh, probably some real, uh, robust guidance around activities for the kids over the summer. Um, and then I'm not sure what else after that. I think the hotels, the tourism and all that will be farther down the road because of, of the concerns about, um, cross county travel, et cetera. So I think that's everything that I have so far. And, uh, but happy to answer questions or have, be part of the discussion. Thanks.
Thank you for the update, Dr. Pace. Go ahead and open it up to the board for discussion. Go ahead, Supervisor Brown, to you.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Dr. Pace, for that report. I wanted a, a clarification. You said we have thirty. Uh, when I look on the, um, dashboard, it says twenty-six. I know you said you had two more late in the evening yesterday. So obviously that's why it's not on the dashboard yet. Does this thirty include the two that left back to, uh, a different county that were relocated?
No, no. If you look on the dashboard, those two are in a different category now. So if we had left those, then we would be at thirty-two now.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify and make sure what, uh, what the number was. Okay. Uh, I did have some other questions. Uh, one of them is I, I wanted to agree with you. Uh, the idea that knowing where the, uh, uh, cases are is kind of a false, uh, statement of, uh, safety, of feeling safe. Because it's what we don't know still that, uh, we shouldn't just, uh, freely, um, not mask and, and start hugging everybody, uh, and, and feeling like we're safe because everything is in one area and it's not your area. Like it's still an area that we don't know. If nobody's been tested or if, if there's less testing happening in those areas, uh, we just may not know who's asymptomatic and who might still be carrying the virus. And so be safe everywhere you go, pretty much. That's just, that should be the, the rule of thumb right now is be safe wherever you go, uh, no matter what information is out there. Uh, do you know what the average of tests per day is that we're seeing right now, uh, with the new Verily system?
Well, uh, so the Verily is doing something like thirty to fifty a day. They can do up to a hundred and fifty a day. Uh, we're doing things on, in other ways as well, where we are going out special ways to get high risk people or people that we're concerned about for some reason. The different clinical sites are doing, you know, varying numbers. Uh, so the hos- the hospitals and the clinics are doing different numbers of tests. And then, um, we're doing these different surveillance strategies, which is, you know, so will be big chunks of them. I think, uh, so it's probably somewhere between fifty and a hundred a day.
Okay. Which, which is-
And again, we have capacity for quite a bit more.
And, and you said something along the lines of if we go below a certain threshold, there may be certain issues of, uh, being able to move forward. What, what, what's that threshold that you're kinda seeing? Is that less than thirty-five, less than twenty-five?
No, we, we promised that we would be able to do a hu- a one point five for a hundred thousand people.
Right.
I'm sorry, one point five for a thousand people. So it's, uh, basically a hundred a day. We, we basically agree that we can keep the, we have the capacity to do a hundred a day. So, you know, they basically will say, uh, if you're not doing that, there's a little bit of concern. But, you know, if we've got the capacity and it's out there and we're advertising and people just for whatever reason aren't getting tested, they're choosing not to get tested, we can't go make people get tested. I think what's gonna happen with the testing is that, you know, when the cases go up or when somebody finds out that at their workplace, somebody was positive, then we'll have a rash of people that get interested in getting tested. And so, you know, I think part of it has been that there's been a little bit of a sense that, you know, it's not really out there. This is a hoax. This doesn't really affect us that much. And so it's, there's been less demand for testing. I think once, once the people recognize that like, oh, the guy up the street got it, that means I can get it too. They'll probably be more interested in testing and, um, yeah.
Of course. Uh, and I think testing is also, um, while I think it's important, it's also a, a kind of a false safety as well. Just because you test negative today and then you go out to, uh, the store or go to a gathering tomorrow does not mean that you're still negative. It's a, it's a very fluid situation. So we still need to be careful in what our actions and our activities are, uh, no matter what. Um, do you have, and, and this is just, uh, a clinical question, a, um, a, a viral infection question. I know that right now, South America is the hotspot and right now they're in their winter time. Um, is there any sign that going into summer, which we, if we, we've been talking a lot of times that we might be, uh, following the, the, the waves of the nineteen eighteen flu where we saw a dip in the summertime and then we saw a rise again increasing in the winter time? Is there anything that's showing that as we are going into summer, that either the infections are less acute? Or that we're seeing less of a spread? Is there anything, any signs that you're hearing or seeing in, uh, the medical field?
You know, that's of course, one of the big questions. I think, um, you know, I think the short answer is no, we're not, we're not, most of the experts are not saying that's what we should anticipate. I think though, that's a little bit, uh, misguided. You know, like if you look at, how come Florida has a lower incidence even though they've been more liberal in their social movement? Is it because people are outside more? There's just more of an outside lifestyle? Is it because of the warmth and the humidity? We don't, you know, we don't really know all that stuff yet. Uh, certainly South America, uh, was starting to get it while they were still, I mean, you know, some of it's in Brazil in the Amazon where they're having problems. So it's, um, uh, even though South America is, um, moving into winter, you know, some of the places are where it's really, really hot. So I don't think we know well enough. Most of the expert stuff I've seen was suggesting that we're probably, that, that this virus doesn't seem to respond that way. I think we'll probably, I think the summer's gonna be better than the fall and the winter because of, we're outside more and we don't have the flu to worry about compounding it. And so partly that's why I'm kind of interested in, you know, moving along quickly to open things up as long as we're trying to do it reasonably, methodically and safely. But I feel a little more, uh, latitude to try to open while we're in this situation where the hospitals aren't gonna be that full from other things. And, uh, um, people can be outside more. And, uh, so we'll see. But yeah, that's, that's a, we'll, we'll know a lot more in six months to answer that question, I think.
Or, or in a couple of years when the studies are completed.
Right.
My, my other question is, and it, and it's not necessarily something you can answer, but I guess you kinda hinted on it that you said there's a way to sign up for the Verily testing without going online. Cause I, I just went to the website and I've received some complaints about it that you have to have a Gmail. And I know that Google is involved with Verily. Uh, it just seems like this forced tracking method that you have to go through. Uh, I don't have a Google account, so I'd have to create a Google account. I know it's free, but it's also a collection of ways to get your information. Is there a way to do it without having to, uh, sign up through this, uh, official way?
So, right. It's a, you know, that's been a frustration from our point of view as well. So, I mean, one thing to say is the state is providing this. This is a, this is a, we're getting free testing, which this is a, this is a big expense. And part of how they did this is by partnering with, uh, this Verily company, which is a Google offshoot. So, yeah, I mean, there may be some data tracking issues and things like that. But I think really what's happening, you know, these tests, if you go to Quest and get it, it's a hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And if we're doing, you know, a hundred a day, what's that? Ten thousand dollars a day, right? Yeah. So, you know, we're, we're not, people aren't having to pay for this. People that are, don't have insurance. And so they, the Google, the Gmail account was the initial thing. It, it looks like you can do it with other email accounts as well because that's how they, they communicate the results. So, um, and then we are trying to come up with another sort of, uh, workaround for folks that don't have email access or the elders that are not comfortable on that, or you don't have a smartphone or whatever. So if somebody wants to get tested and they are not able to go through that, they should contact us with the health department. And we're, we're kind of rapidly trying to get this workaround that's smooth so that people can get tested. Because it doesn't make good sense to put a platform in a rural county that doesn't have good internet access. But it puts just another obstacle to getting care. You know, that's very frustrating to us. All this work is going into it. And then half the people can't access it. That's not a good thing. So we're working around that.
And I have a comment and one last question. Uh, when I went to the, uh, Lake County Public Health, uh, site and clicked on the Verily link, uh, the link was not the correct link. It says S U D Y instead of study in the link. So, uh, I'll, I'll send an email just so that you, uh, can fix that. So it's easier to access from the public perspective.
Okay, great. Yeah. Hopefully, I think Carolyn's probably on here now. She's usually really good at getting these things taken care of. So thanks for bringing those up.
And do you have any, uh, idea of when? I know the governor last week said this week he would be providing some guidelines for gyms. Do we have any idea specifically on when or is it still kind of up in the air?
Yeah, you know, so we were expecting some, some guidance yesterday with his press release yesterday, with his, uh, press conference. But with all the protests, that's what he focused on. So, um, uh, the, uh, I suspect it'll be out this week. That's kind of what they were saying. And I think just to reiterate, um, moving forward, now that it's a little clearer what the process is, is there's two things needed to open up a new sector. One thing is, is that the governor's people need to come out with a guidance for that sector. And then the second is I need to say, yes, okay, we're in a place where it makes sense to move forward and open another sector. So up until this point, I had basically just been aligned with the, with the governor's rules. And when he said it was okay, it was okay. But I think moving forward now, we'll have to do these two steps. So for example, when he comes out and says, okay, gyms, gyms can open if they follow these guidelines, then I'll have to look at that and look at what our situation is at that point and then give the green light or not. Or say, probably what I'll do is say, okay, you know, on Friday, gyms can open or something like that. So give people a couple of days to sort of ramp up and kind of prepare and force this. But, so it's just, you know, this process is constantly changing. I only have so much control over it. It's changing on the state level as well, but that's the way the guidance is, is moving forward now.
Well, before I let you go, I just wanna say I do appreciate the movement that we have had in our county to reopen businesses. Uh, I know you've been in discussions with our schools, our colleges. Uh, and I, I, I know that I've gotten some positive feedback also from some of the folks that are at the Blue Collar Committee as far as the reception of information that you've received from them, uh, and your, uh, flexibility on looking at different things. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from, uh, Supervisor? No other questions from the board? All right. Okay, uh, Dr. Base, uh, yeah, thank you for the update as we move through this. Yeah, we'll be looking for those, uh, other orders as we come down. Um, one thing I wanna say to, uh, all of our businesses and, um, everyone out there, I really wanna appreciate, uh, tell you how much I appreciate, uh, your cooperation in, um, opening up. I know the masking issue, uh, you know, is a challenge, uh, but I appreciate every business owner I've been able to speak with as far as the supervisor going out, understanding in these difficult times, uh, these is uncharted territory. But I just wanna thank everybody, uh, for doing, uh, what they can. So, um, Dr. Pace, as we move forward, um, wanna thank you on, uh, all the testing and the sites. You know, I know it was wel- welcome down here in Middletown. I don't know what the number was that was tested last Wednesday. But, uh, I know that folks were, I got feedback that they were very happy that the testing was happening down here in our local community. Um, you know, as we move forward with this, uh, so, uh, greatly appreciate it. And, uh, as we move forward, I know there's gonna be challenges, uh, but I'm glad to hear that on Thursday, uh, we're still moving forward with the in-room dining, um, which is gonna really help some of our, uh, you know, our businesses move forward and really bring, start to bring some more income in. So, uh, thank you very much on, on those issues. So, uh, Supervisor Brown, there you go.
Yeah, I just have one, uh, quick question because I, I know, um, uh, you know, I've received four complaints on different businesses that I followed up on and, and reported back to, uh, Dr. Pace and to Carol on that. So, um, what, what else is going on with the rest of the county? What are, what are the other board members finding out or reporting back? That's what I'm curious about.
Yeah, I can report, uh, just on, on mine. Uh, the, you know, the complaint comes in, reach out to the business owner. Uh, you know, it's been a good communication at this point. I still got a couple I gotta do today, uh, later on this afternoon. But so far, uh, that's why I was saying thank you to the business community. Obviously, uh, it's an in-depth discussion, but most of the businesses are, uh, usually doing, um, what is required. I think some of the changes in the masking order, um, people just need to be educated on, especially, uh, not having to show the doctor's note and other things. So I think it's just an education process. It seems to be going pretty good at this point and, um, will just continue. So that's just for my, my personal contact with business owners with the complaints that I'm getting.
I know, uh, for me, in the situations that have come up in District Three, health has made, uh, the effort to go out and, uh, I await for them to call me to go out. And I haven't had to personally engage just as of yet. There is another, uh, there was another complaint about, uh, Airbnbs and how, uh, there was a situation where, uh, folks in the, I wanna say Clear Lake Oaks area were having, uh, different, I guess, different customers come in and, and, and purchase, whereas there's other set of Airbnb clients that are, are following the rules. So they're having some, somewhat of a, uh, a problem with equity, if that makes any sense. So, um, uh, the gentleman that had sent an email to me, so I'm gonna talk with him. I know he had wanted us to have, I think, the county do something about that, but I was gonna talk to him first before we move forward.
And I know that I, I, go for it, Tina.
Uh, for me, I find some businesses are just confused. Things are moving so fast. They're not aware of, of really what they're, you know, responsible to do and really receptive to, to hearing the education and, and willing to, you know, do what is necessary to protect, um, not only their employees, but people coming into their businesses.
And for, for me, I, I've received, I think I'm up to four complaints. I gotta take care of two of them. I just received them yesterday. Um, and what I do is I just go over there and I talk to them, uh, see what's going on. I kinda take a look at the situation, uh, give them some tips. Uh, if I don't see a Plexiglas, I let them know that a lot of people are using Plexiglas, which that way that's a extra level of protection. If the mask comes off, then at least you have something in between you and the customer. Uh, because it, I, I'm, I'm not gonna disagree that having a mask on all day, especially if you're doing, uh, restocking the shelves and things like that at the same time, it, it, it becomes difficult. So how can we make it so that it's easier for that relationship between customer and employee to not feel like it's being infringed on, um, by, uh, with, with the health issues that could occur? Um, but I think that, uh, that's been my tactic is to offer some tips from other places that I've seen do it really well. Um, and it's, I've never had anybody, uh, I, I, I've never approached anybody that's reacted negatively. Uh, I think everyone's trying to do what they can. Uh, it's a difficult situation to deal with, um, and not everybody's doing it perfectly. Uh, but I don't think anybody that I'm aware of is doing it, um, in a very, uh, negative approach to purposely not follow the order.
That, that's interesting. Everybody's experiencing something different. I, Tina said that the businesses were confused and I found that the complainants were confused that there was a violation. Uh, so it's kind of interesting. I, I actually had one complaint, one complaint that came in that, uh, included Hardesters in Middletown. And I know they're not out of compliance. A lot of people go in there and have, uh, have said that they're, they're doing everything just right. So it's, it's been kind of interesting to see these anonymous complaints come in without any validation.
Absolutely. In the Hardesters, uh, situation, they're one of the folks that are doing such a great job at all their stores. So, uh, yeah, that's in my district and got that, you know, uh, complaint also about, from a couple of times. But, uh, they posted, they're doing everything that they can. Uh, some of the stuff that they came in, um, when the masking did change, where you didn't have to ask for a note, it really was more of an enforcement question, uh, than, uh, not wearing the mask. So, um, you know, with Dr. So um you know, with Dr. Pace's clarification, I think we'll just continue to educate the public also of what the requirements are of business owners.
And I, I will say that I'm really happy that this is being put on us rather than public health. Because at the same time, you got to filter through the um potential internal conflicts that already may exist between somebody who's filing a complaint and that business or the pre, the people at the business. I know I've had to deal with one of those complaints, which seemed to be more of a personal conflict than it was a public healthcare conflict. Uh so I, I'd rather we deal with that than waste our public health uh, uh staff time to deal with things like that.
All right, any more uh questions at this point for Dr. Pace from the board? Go ahead Supervisor Brandl.
Yeah, no, but um there has been some customers as well or, you know, constituents that have made complaints. I've just dealt with them personally or talked to them about, it's usually masking. Um so I didn't consider those uh in the report. Um just, just a note for clarification. But another thing I wanted to also state was uh, Dr. Pace, thank you for correcting the number of different COVID cases that were counted because it's very difficult um to uh maintain the trust with the constituents in the community. So by doing that and, and, and just kind of being accountable for it and kind of listing that really helps. And I want to stay in that, in, in that level of transparency as much as possible. Um and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and um at this point, open up the room Jake. Do we have any hands up or? I know that we have gotten written comments in um on this item here. It is part of the uh board record, which we have uh, you know, attached to the agenda. And um what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and open up the room at this point. And uh there we go, we got, uh I can't see it, but we have a hand up, uh Joseph.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. Can you hear me all right, folks?
Yes.
Thank you. I am not a resident of Lake County. I, my wife and family, we visit there every year. Uh for probably thirty years, we've been there for a week in the summer. And I've been, I find your meeting very helpful to listen. Uh I'm in a situation where I have a rental reservation in with an Airbnb uh facility and a three thousand dollar deposit. Uh and looking at the state regulations, it seems to say, don't come up there right now. And I think that's what you're also saying. Uh your last press release wasn't as clear as it possibly could have been regarding that. Previously, you had said what's not included. It would be able, good to continue that with your other press releases. But the way I'm interpreting it is that right now Airbnb is not to rent lodging for recreational travel uh by state order, sort of, and originally until June first by your specific order. So just asking for clarification that that's correct interpretation. I'm going to try and collect my deposit from the insurance company and I want to be able to tell them that I can't do what you don't want me to do. Thank you.
Okay, uh go ahead, Dr. Pace.
Right, so that, that's absolutely correct. The, the governor's orders is to not travel for vacation and tourism at this point. And um uh and our orders are basically aligned with the, with the state's orders. And so the governor, you're, you're absolutely correct. And uh whether that's going to change, I don't know when your reservation is, but I think probably the safest thing is to go ahead and get your, get your deposit back. And I'm sorry, we won't see you this summer.
Yeah, I, mine's for the end of, my reservation's the end of June. And listening to you, it sounds like the state won't be doing anything about that in that timeframe. But.
I think that's probably true.
Yeah, I do appreciate the responsible approach you guys are taking and talking on this. Uh so thank you very much.
Thank you, Joseph. Hopefully we'll see you next year. Okay, uh Jake, I don't see any other hands up. Do we have any that I can't see or?
Right, so it looks like that was the only hand that came up uh so we could unmute the floor here.
Yeah, we go ahead and unmute the floor.
All right, the floor is muted. If you'd like to comment, please state your first and last name.
I think you mean it's unmuted.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's any comment or uh, the room is open. Okay, hearing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Thank you Jake. Supervisor Sabatier?
I, I, I will keep it brief since I took so much time earlier. Uh but Dr. Pace, um it, it's not my favorite thing to offer to you, but if they say that we can open gyms and if you feel uncomfortable, maybe adding some, uh adding to the restrictions and regulations so that our gyms can open under what you feel more comfortable with. I, I think our, our gyms would prefer opening than not being able to open. Um granted, I'm sure it depends what the restrictions look like, but I just want to make sure that uh um it's not just a uh black and white of what can happen. Uh want to make sure you have the leniency of that gray.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I, I think the way um depending on each circumstance, but um you know, like the way we did with the restaurants, I think is really uh prudent in a way to take a step to partial opening and then if things go okay, take a second step. And it allows the businesses to, I don't know, you know, so we'll, we'll just see. I think it depends on when it comes out, how we're doing at the time. But a very likely uh, uh, uh way to do it might be to allow, you know, outside exercise classes and a handful of people in a gym at one time. And then if that goes okay, then we can reduce the, re, relax the restrictions even more. But you know, the whole goal here is, is to try to keep the transmission at a reasonable level. And how we do that, how we kind of adjust people's behavior to do that is kind of tricky. And uh, and there's no, there's no hard and fast right and wrong. The only way we'll know we got it wrong is if we, you know, we get in trouble later on uh or that we were too tight and then nobody can do anything. So we're trying to find that middle path, but thanks for reminding me to, to mention that. Because yeah, I think having a two-step process for certain things will be a good idea.
Thank you, Dr. Pace.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a good idea, obviously uh opening up uh with outside dining. Uh and then this Thursday, obviously uh with the indoor dining stuff. I think that all business owners, including gyms, uh everything is, is prepared to, I think, take the next steps. At least that's what I've been seeing in our community as we move through the process here. People are waiting, they understand we've got to do it responsibly. And I think our business community, our chambers, mama, every uh business group has been able to really um think about how we're going to do this all together. So just want to thank them. I know they're thinking about it today and they're waiting to open. So as those orders come down, uh you know, it'll be good when we can get them open for business and some, but a little bit of normal uh income coming in for themselves. Uh the other question, I did have a clarification question, which I hadn't got this before, Dr. Pace. Uh dance studios for um, for youth, what is a dance studio considered? I, I don't know. I didn't have an answer for that, so I'm going to ask. Is that considered a gym or is that considered a?
Yeah, we've been um.
Just a question for my own.
Right, I think um, so I, I'm, what I'm hoping to do is it, what I'm hoping to do is uh, I, I think the way we would classify that is an exercise class. But I think there's probably, what I'm thinking about it is there's two different uh groups of it. One's kids activities and the other's for adults. Because I think the kids activities, we, we need to try to get those things going and get those kids out and about and socializing a little bit, especially because their risk seems to be lower. And um so uh, you know, we're, that, I, we're kind of what, we, we've had a couple of questions about that in the last week. And I was saying, let's wait and see what the governor comes up with in the next couple of days. And if it's not really, you know, and then we'll see what we can work with with that. But I think for sure, I would like to get any kind of active kids activities uh with some guidance and some ways to keep it safe open soon. And then uh the exercise classes would probably be okay, especially outside. Inside exercise classes, there will have to be some distancing, you know? So I think there's just, a lot of what we're going to have to be moving to here is not like, is this okay or not okay? But how do we do some of these activities in a safe way? What's a safer way to do it and what's a not safe way to do it? You know, it's sort of like um with a, with a holiday weekend. It, to say, I heard it described the other day. It's um like they used to say, just say no to drugs. And that didn't really work that well. And then we started moving into a way of messaging like how's, what's safe, safer use and what's less safe use? Or the same with sex, you know? Just don't have sex to the teenagers. Maybe that works to some extent, but there's other ways to talk about having safer sex. And I think it's the same way with this kind of thing where, where people need to have activity. They want to have activity. We're still at a pretty low level. So what are the ways they can do that more safely? And what are the ways that are not a good idea to do it a, a, at all? And to start kind of talking about it in that way. So I think the dance studio is, is an example of that. And we're trying to sort of shift the messaging and shift the focus with that.
Okay, thank you. All right, then there's no more questions. Uh no more questions for the board at this point for Dr. Pace? Okay, Dr. Pace, thank you very much for coming in. Continue to have these meetings and update us on uh where we're going. But uh thank you for everything that's being done, all the health department, Denise, uh and everybody over there in environmental health. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along to our nineteen, non-timed items. Uh we are going to go back to item. Uh Carol, uh do we have uh someone from the tax collector's office so we can take up item five point uh one five?
Yes, I believe Patrick Sullivan and Liz Martinez are on the, in the Zoom meeting and prepared to present five point one five. Uh Patrick, I can see you. I cannot see Liz. Is she here?
Yeah, good morning. Um this is Patrick. Uh Liz and I are actually using a, a shared access here, so she is on the same line I am.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and Supervisor Sabatier, you're the one who pulled this item, so.
So uh thank you very much for uh bringing this item back. Um I had an email exchange um where there was some uh discussion on the uh costs of, a, a, as we remember, we took this back to take a look at what the cost would be for HDL, which is um uh a group that we use for our sales tax, um to kind of look at, to be audited, uh to make sure that we're getting everything. Um we, we have a contract with HDL for that. And so we were looking to see if a contract with HDL uh would suffice or if we would want to go with the extra extension of megabyte. And so when I was reviewing the um, let me go back to my email. When I was reviewing the uh megabyte information or the HDL information that I had received, it was based on the cost due to the increase in TOT that we saw. And, and uh I'm just going to give kudos to our staff member, Patrick Sullivan. I think he did a fantastic job in catching some of the TOT taxes that we were not receiving in the past years. Uh he put a large effort to capture a lot of Airbnbs and a lot of others like that in order to get us up to date with who was acting and behaving as a hotel. And so everyone should play uh the same game across the board, uh pay the same dues and the same fees. And so this helped us out. And we saw a very large increase in 2019 because of that. And the cost that we're looking at for HDL is kind of based on the information from 2019, which to me is kind of a um, uh it's, it's, it's an outlier year because of the increases that we had. Now, what we were looking at was what is the cost per year per uh TOT uh business? And also what's the cost per year for new TOT businesses? Um it, it was a drastic uh amount. It was thirty-five percent uh is what HDL would take for any new business. But other than that, it was fifteen dollar fee. And so there was a lot of cost put into this uh email that I received to show that it was better to go with megabyte than it was to go with HDL. But it also had some hours, so uh of staff time spent to, to go after the TOT. I think that right now, we've added so many on there that what we're looking at is a fluke year of large increases versus a plateau of TOT taxes, where then that cost would be a whole lot less. And I'm wondering, we're looking at a two hundred thousand uh dollar increase from 2018 to 2019 in TOT taxes, mainly due to this activity of collection. But at the same time, when we do a tax auction of tax defaulted properties, we're looking at about two million dollars that comes back on, into our um, our teeter fund and into our general fund. And, and obviously there's a split somewhere, uh as well as paying back the jurisdictions that weren't paid back, which is our fire districts and so on and so forth. Um I don't know if continuing to use staff time for the TOT versus handing it off to HDL who would take care of it all by themselves, where yeah, we might lose a little bit more on new TOT businesses that we find, but it would be a nominal fee for those that continue to be a TOT. And then our staff time could be alleviated to focus on new taxes that we're, we're struggling to push out every single year. And so I wanted to have the conversation about, these numbers seem to be based on the increase of 2019 and not on what a plateau would look like. And have we had the chance to even say, and I apologize to staff for not having this conversation with them. Uh I, this is definitely a open conversation now that I should have had with staff earlier. But have we had the chance to sit down with HDL to see if we can lower that thirty-five percent rather than just taking uh word from their website and their uh salesman that would tell us this is going to be at thirty-five percent? Um so I'm looking to see wh- wh- what's really possible. I know megabyte is cheaper, but it also still relies on staff time. And I know that staff capacity is always an issue for us. And this would be mostly a loss on money that is new money that doesn't even exist right now versus a loss of money on TOTs that would be consistent TOTs that would continue in the future. Uh and so maybe some clarifications on what my understanding is based on all my reading uh and also a discussion on um the values of either or.
Okay, what I'd like to do now is uh turn it over to, to uh Patrick and um also Liz uh from our, our tax collector's office and then go through the process. And yeah, I think you made a good point, uh Bruno, you have these large conversations. You know, it's on the agenda there, reaching out to our um folks that have gone through this work and um, you know, is always good. So you have the opportunity to do that once the agenda is posted. So um go ahead, uh Patrick.
Good morning. Um I can uh respond a little bit to the point that Bruno uh brought up. And that is true that these numbers were based off 2019, which probably does represent the, essentially the biggest year of new revenue that we would have. We, we did pick up the majority of short-term rentals that were unidentified, at least according to our uh vendor software. There is still always a, a turn each year and we know there are still properties unidentified. But that was the, probably the biggest year of new revenue we would have. Um when you look at what the standard fees are, we were to exclude the um sort of that discovery, that thirty-five percent commission that HDL looks at, the base fee would be around fifty-two to fifty-five thousand dollars each year to use HDL, not factoring in revenue discovery for new properties. Uh our staff cost is about uh twenty-six thousand. So at a base level, it basically doubles to go to HDL. But we don't know, because there is always a turnover, there are new properties, we'd always be giving some money up in revenue discovery. And because we don't have a big history with data, I just, I'm not sure I could really give a, a proper estimate of what that would be. Uh I believe the minimum payment to HDL is ten thousand. So that would bring it up to, you know, sixty-two to sixty-five thousand. So that would bring it up to, you know, sixty-two to sixty-five thousand. If we exceed that, they would take a larger cut. The the primary advantage with HDL, which uh, we did note is they are a strong company. They are very efficient, um, they do offer a full spread of services through this package, it's. It's very comprehensive. But when staff was looking at it, we were also looking at cost and since it it seemed at a minimum. The cost was doubling, that that's where that concern came from. Um, so that's that's sort of a general background and we're happy to answer any other questions.
I think just a question for me is, the recommendation at this point is to move forward with. With with this contract with HDL, right, is that the recommendation? Obviously, it must have been because it got on the consent agenda, uh, so.
The recommendation is to move forward with a co- with a contract with megabyte. Megabyte is the Tax Collector's existing software and this would just add T O T module to it. And Liz could probably speak to that, the compatibility with the system they've used on a long-standing basis.
So currently, um, the process is very manual, um, to the T O T module was developed by megabyte um, a few years ago. Um, and it's gonna, it would actually allow um, for our process to be more efficient. I mean, will allow for, you know, online filings, which would reduce staff time. And um, I just wanted to clarify with regards to. The staff member that currently works on T O T is not involved at all in the uh, in the tax help process. So we're not taken away from from that. Um, and it's only about sixty hours a year right now, the current staff works on T O T. Um, and I think that with this T O T module through megabyte and with it, um, allowing for the online filing. Um, and making it more efficient, I think that staff time is gonna be reduced.
Okay, thank you, Liz. Supervisor Sabatier.
And and I just have a final question, what is the cost of the audit? Because I know that HDL does an audit with the uh, contract that we would be signing with them. And uh, with megabyte, we would still have to do another audit on top of that, so I'm just kind of curious what the cost is.
Uh, this is Patrick, I believe the cost for HDL for the audit was, it was either nineteen hundred or nineteen fifty. Um, I would have to pull that proposal to look. Uh, so it it basically broke down. Uh, three-year, the three-year period that you would have a commercial property that HDL would audit, the total cost. Uh, over that three-year period with HDL for us would be twenty-one hundred. And that includes audit and filing, um, HDL, it did have an option to do audit only. Uh, for those properties and so I believe that carve-out was nineteen hundred or nineteen fifty. It basically works out to about the same as that fifteen dollar quarterly filing, nineteen hundred per year, I'm sorry, we have the number.
Right, but but if we do it, if we do the megabyte and then we have to pay for an audit, what on average are those audits? So what's the cost of those audits?
So my understanding is that we have not uh. Set up an auditing program here for T O T. Um, I know some counties do that in-house, others do contract that out. But we had looked at, there's there's sort of a more basic audit, um. Like a desk audit and that's what with the megabyte module and the host compliance contract. We were hoping to use as sort of a. On a basic level at least, the flag revenue that is out of proportion, uh, you know, unexpectedly low if there are indicators that. Are out of alignment with the area, that between these two software programs, we'll be able to flag those. But to do an actual audit, if we didn't have staff in-house, we would be looking at. Using an outside service such as HDL to do this.
Supervisor Crandall?
So um, so even if we, uh, in in, if I'm hearing this correctly, even if we continue on with megabyte. We could steal an essence contract with HDL to do the audit, is that what I'm hearing or am I hearing that different? Oops, I don't know what happened, sorry.
Um, this is Patrick, that that could be potentially uh, viable, we. We haven't progressed that far in any discussion with HDL. But if there were to be a property that uh, like especially a larger commercial property that were to be flagged. We did a basic uh, review of records and it still wasn't making sense. A company like HDL would be a a primary option for an audit. Um, one of one of the difficulties is that a lot of our properties are not generating. Um, a really high revenue volume, a lot of T O T audits in different jurisdictions are focused off. Um, larger hotels and bigger bigger resorts where you're generating a really high volume of revenue. Because the auditing process can be expensive, so there's always a risk. Reward analysis because you don't want to spend. Um, you usually want to have some indicator that an audit would be worth it to spend that level of money. Um, but that's just in in my experience at least.
Thank you, Patrick, and and then Liz, um, is this person that does uh, conducts the T O T? Is it the same person that does the T I D calculations as well or?
That's correct, yes, it all happens simultaneously.
Okay, any more questions from the board?
I have one last question, thank you, uh, so I know that uh, Mr. Sullivan uh, was pivotal in the increase of twenty nineteen. And in capturing all the uh, Airbnbs that we were unaware of at the time, uh, before he started. Uh, I'm one hundred percent sure that he uh, worked hand in hand with the Tax Collector's Office. Uh, that it was not just a solo uh, project that he worked on. Uh, but at this point, once we get megabyte, everything will be done in the Tax Collector's Office, am I correct in in understanding and believing that?
Uh, this is Patrick, yes, I think all the primary tasks would shift to the um, Tax Collector's Office. And we have been working collaboratively together on this the the whole time, their staff has been very helpful um, for me. Probably the area I would foresee me retaining some involvement is. Uh, with host compliance, there's still probably another year or two. Where as we get through um, another summer season or two. We'll be cleaning out the rest of whatever remain from Airbnb and VRBO, just doing a check every, you know, three to six months. But hopefully by next year, this would become a fairly automated process.
Okay, any more questions from the board? Okay, Jake, uh, can you open up the room, please?
Yeah, to open up the room. The floor has been unmuted, if you'd like to speak, please uh, state your first and last name.
Can I see a hand up here, Sally Peterson?
Uh, yes, hi, um, I had a question about um, what what is the effect? To the amount of money the T I D will be receiving, is that just gonna be?
We're on the, you know, this is in item five, five point one five is about an addendum for the T O T. Um, I don't know if that.
The T O T is um, doesn't that go to, some of those funds go to the to the T I D board, right?
Oh, Mr. Chair, the T I D board gets the T I D assistance, it does not um, get these these funds directly.
Yeah, so that's a, that's a different item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, the only reason I brought it up earlier was just to see if that was part of what the person conducting the the work on T O T was doing. Is that they had that extra task is all, that's the only reason why that was brought up.
Okay, um, any more uh, comment from the room? Okay, hearing none, Jake, go ahead and close up, we'll bring it back to the board for action, on item five point one five. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign the addendum between County of Lake and Megabyte Systems Incorporated. For the purchase of the transient occupancy tax module in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Scott, go ahead and do the roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you Liz, thank you, um, Patrick. Okay, moving right along, um, we'll go ahead and go to item. Uh, seven point two, consideration of a timeline and resumption of in-person uh, board meet, border supervisor meetings. This is something uh, we had talked about last week and we just go ahead and uh, look at a report and. You know, have a conversation about uh, when we're thinking about coming back, so Carol, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, so uh, in your last, at your last meeting last Tuesday. You asked uh, staff to work on plans to get you back to meeting in person as soon as possible. Actually, the conversation was focused on uh, melding of in-person meetings and and with Zoom. And so I'm gonna give you a little report on where we stand with that. A- as you know, uh, during the shelter in place order, the pandemic-related shelter in place order. Your board began meeting virtually in Zoom in March twenty twenty. Through Zoom, your board has been able to interact directly with constituents and receive their public comments. In addition to Zoom, your board meetings have continued to be broadcast through our Granicus Agenda software. On MediaCom, Channel Eight, which is the Lake County PEG channel. And on Facebook, and Facebook also is closed captioning our meetings. Uh, during this time, public participation in board meetings has increased substantially. With an average of thirty-five participants joining the board through Zoom for each meeting. Viewership has also gone up dramatically through Facebook during the pandemic with an average uh, between forty-two hundred and fifty-seven hundred views of each meeting. Granicus views have also risen considerably as we have emphasized electronic participation in that venue as well. In January, we were averaging around a hundred viewers per meeting in through Granicus. And we've seen an average of between three hundred and five hundred viewers. Um, since the onset of the pandemic in Granicus. We don't have access to data about viewership in the PEG channel. As the gradual reopening from the pandemic is underway in Lake County. You've tasked staff with planning for the resumption of in-person board meetings. But while also keeping Granicus and PEG TV in place, uh, those have been our longstanding that norm, obviously. The board also expressed an interest in continuing the use of Zoom. Given the dramatic and inconsistent increase in public participation that has come with that. The public has also expressed considerable appreciation for the Zoom platform. Because for the most part, it has made participation easy from any location with internet connectivity. Email public comment has also similarly made participation available to more people. This, that practice will also remain in place and continue to be refined. Locally, as pandemic restrictions are being lifted, but cases are still on the rise. The public is still being strongly encouraged to stay at home, except. When necessary to go out and engage in permitted activities. Continued use of Zoom makes it possible for the public to actively participate in board meetings without risk of trans- transmission of the illness. And since March, uh, staff has only heard from two individuals who expressed. That they did not have internet connectivity and couldn't participate in a board meeting via Zoom. So tasked with melding all four platforms. Staff met recently to discuss what is possible from a technology standpoint. As well as to consider the physical aspects of hosting the public in the board chambers. While still needing to comply with social distancing requirements. Measurement of the Boardroom indicates that along with your board and support staff. The chambers can accommodate approximately twenty members of the public with social distancing. Given that participation in Zoom has averaged about twice that number during recent meetings. If the chambers is reopened to the public, the board will likely be put in a position of turning members of the public away. Which would certainly not be anyone's preferred practice. Additionally, um, if we provide limited public access to the board chambers. At this time, we would also need to consider how we're managing people who congregate outside. We, if we have met capacity inside, we probably have some social distancing challenges uh, resulting in the lobby. And new studies indicate that aerosol from this virus can remain in an enclosed space for a considerable period of time. Making it unsafe for persons to be in the same room even with social distancing. During the crisis, as you know, many regular board meetings have lasted well into the afternoon. Raising concern that resumption of in-person meetings immediately may not be in the best interests of your board or the public at this time. Much like is being done in county offices, the boardroom requires adaptation to be ready for in-person meetings. Protective shielding needs to be installed at the stations of each board member and support staff person. And at the public comment podium. Supplies need to be in place with staff designated to continuously sanitize surfaces that are used throughout each meeting. From a technology standpoint, additional time is needed to work out the details. Around what we're calling the hybrid model, melding of all four platforms of live and virtual meeting participation. We need to be able to ensure that board meetings are conducted as smoothly as possible while maximizing public participation. Controlling the variety of audio inputs so everyone can be heard is just one challenge. When taking the hybrid approach, there will always be delays between audio and video signals known as latency. But this can be managed with uh, by establishing protocols between the chair and support staff. For the starting, pausing and ending of meetings. The manner in which audio for public comment is received in the boardroom and then broadcast on Zoom also needs to be addressed. Much earlier on, when you first began your transition from in-person to meetings in Zoom. Public comment was received through a nearby speakerphone, you might remember that the last couple of times. The board was in the chambers um, without the public. Um, the the speakerphone worked in a primitive way, um, but there were some technical issues with it at the time. And it's not a good long-term solution. Also, with all board members returning to an in-person setting and Zoom, staging in the room needs to be considered. Um, uh, because it might be distracting to have you in the boardroom. Looking at your iPad for your video connection. Uh, and and staying engaged with what's going on in the room, the people that that are in the room as well. We also anticipate that we would need to equip board members with headphones if we're all going to do it in the boardroom together. Um, because there would be competing sound issues with you joining Zoom from a mobile device. Um, and and it was audible at the same time, we'd have all these different uh, audible issues going on in the room. And then there's also the wifi connectivity that you use for using a mobile device to connect via Zoom. There would be some bandwidth uh, concerns that need to be addressed that that would interfere with some of your transmissions. And so for those times that that uh, occasional times when a member, uh, when your connection gets a little delayed or bumpy. Uh, that's generally a bandwidth um, issue. So um, and and then also, while teleworking is still strongly encouraged. Uh, some of your staff are going to continue to support or participate in board meetings remotely through Zoom. So the melding of the platforms is essential, um, not only for public participation, staff participation, et cetera. So. There's a lot there, I know, and before we um, put this report together for you, we reached out to other counties to. Ask if there was any kind of standard on what other counties were doing. And unfortunately, it seems like every county is in a different place in terms of how. Um, it is managing its board meetings right now, there was no standard. But in light of all the considerations I've laid out for you, what we're recommending today is that you continue to meet in Zoom for the time being. While also broadcasting through Granicus on Channel Eight and on Facebook. While we put the adaptations we need in the boardroom and resolve the technical issues. That will allow us to meld all the platforms together. In all honesty, if we move too quickly, uh, we could erode the experience for everyone. And so um, basically what staff is here to tell you today is that we're making this a high priority. Uh, we're continuing to meet weekly to resolve the uh, issues. Uh, to make sure we can bring it all back together for you as soon as possible. And um, I don't have a projected meeting date for you yet. Uh, but I can report to your board regularly on that because it is a priority of staff.
Okay, Carol, thank you very much, I'm going to open it up to the board. Okay, Carol, thank you very much. I'm going to open it up to the board. It's your pleasure.
Um, thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. I, 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 I feel like that was made more complicated than it needs to be. I, I'm, I'm fine with either way. I think this has been working really well. Obviously, we've gotten a lot of participation of, of public comment, whether through email or public comment through Zoom. Obviously, people are watching on Facebook, but that's a different scenario, just like PEG TV. There's no interaction with us, and I think that's, that's the value of a public meeting is the interaction, not just the ability to watch it. And I think that when I look at every single meeting that we've had in my year and a half that I've been on the board, on average, there might be ten people in the audience, maybe. And I think our biggest draw right now is COVID-19. I think most people want to know what's going on, what's our next steps. And so maybe our, our, the idea should be split. Maybe we need a special meeting every week that's just COVID-19 and we do it on Zoom, and then we take care of the rest of the normal business, which attracts close to nobody, because it's a niche audience for whatever that impact might, for whoever might be impacted by what's being discussed. That, that can be brought back to live in our courtroom, courtroom in the courthouse. And I say that because some people don't have access to Zoom, some people don't have access to internet, and we need to think about those that don't have the ability to be a part of these public meetings, where maybe coming into the courthouse is a possibility for them. And I think that we have to do anything and everything we can to be accessible to the public. This is great, but it doesn't cover everybody either. So I, I think we can make it simple. I think COVID-19 is the big draw, and if we split it off, it would be made simple. The, the overhead projector can be our Zoom thing, where we say, okay, now we're going to listen to whoever has to make a comment. The whole headphone thing and everything, I don't think we should all be on our computer in a Zoom meeting. I, I, I just think it could be a lot easier, and, and I'm, I'm fine with either way, but I just wanted to at least make the statement that it doesn't have to be so complex.
Thank you, Bill. Supervisor Crandall, and then I'll give you Supervisor Scott.
I, I was thinking about when we met, the first two meetings in the chamber rooms during this, the initiation of COVID-19. And I remember we had the speakers, like I want to say, either at the front of the podium or if it was linked into Sam's unit. Either way, that way we can all hear it to avoid having to listen in on the headphones, per se. But, um, but I, I, I'm only bringing that up because I'm trying to think of other optimal ways to try and get a chance for people to call in that are calling in or whatever else may be taking place, if it's Zoom or whatever, they can get their chance to speak in. I'm hoping to get to a point where we're having meetings, people are coming in for public input, and we're allowing folks to call in and do this as well. That way, we can get the most optimal engagement.
Supervisor Scott.
Um, for me, I think staff has really thought this out. I, you know, I don't fully understand all the technical pieces behind it, but they, I think they've explained that it's going to take some time for them to get all these pieces in place. I, I don't think they're looking months to, to do this, but I think maybe within, you know, a couple of weeks or maybe a month to be able to put all the process in place to make this run smoothly. I think we need to rely on staff to do that. My concern also lies with our planning commission, because I believe if we were to go back to live meetings, we would expect our planning commission to do the same. And I think we need to keep them in the loop, because it's very important to have, to make sure we have a quorum of planning commissioners to be able to get our projects to move forward. And I'm concerned that if we were to go to in-person meetings, we may lose that quorum, which may stall projects that we have moving forward. So I think that's something we need to keep in consideration.
That's a good point. Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, I, I'd just like chiming on that. I don't expect any other commission or board or council or or anything to do what we're doing. We, we can, you know, I think everybody's got their own comfort level, including members of this board. I think if any members want to come, we should be able, be able to come back. If they feel more comfortable doing what they're, what we're doing right now, I'm good with that, too. You know, I, I think there's, there's a lot of reasons to do everything that we do, but there's, but mostly that reason is comfort level. And, and I think that's what we need to consider. I mean, literally, if two people feel like they want to come to the courthouse and the other three want to stay doing what we're doing, I'm okay with that. I don't really care. I just, I want everybody to be comfortable. We need, doing our job the best that we can, given the circumstances. I don't think it's going to be weeks. I think, you know, we thought back in, uh, March seventeenth, we thought it was going to be weeks. And, and then, you know, turned into months and could be through the entire summer. So I, I don't think, you know, putting a timeline on it is as important as making sure that everybody that has a job to do is doing it at their own comfort level.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Brown. And I think, you know, Tina brings up good points, Rob, everybody on these things. And also, you know, always taking, you know, like you said, the personal comfort level, and even our staff that has to come in, everybody's in a different situation, and they'll make those decisions on their own, and we want to be able to support them to do that. So any more discussion from the board at this point? Okay, we'll go ahead and Jake, can you open up the room?
Yeah, so it doesn't look like we have any hands up right now. Actually, a hand just came up.
Yeah, see a hand up. Go ahead, Sal.
Hi, good morning. Um, I just wanted to thank Carol for her detailed information and the statistics that she had gathered for the reporting to the board. I myself, I really appreciate being able to stay home and shelter in place and not have to worry about wearing a mask and, you know, going to a public place. It's interesting that only twenty people can be in the room and the chambers there, which makes sense, because those seats are really close together. And then you guys, you know, your, your seats are close together, too. So I just think it's a safety issue and, um, and you know, and also I live on the southern end of the county. So everybody that lives in Middletown has a forty-five minute drive to get to the courthouse, much less, you know, worrying about everyone wearing a mask and being safe and, uh, social distancing and so forth. So I really appreciate the ability, all of the outlets that you're offering to the public. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Sally. Is there, uh, go ahead and open up the room, Jake.
All right, I'll open up the room here. Uh, actually, I have a, um, a comments request for Marvin Avalas.
Yeah, if it's okay, if I could speak?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, my, my name is Marvin. Um, Moke, I, I, I've known you for a while, I'm with Way to Wellville, and I've been involved with the community.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And Hope Rising now for five years, and hopefully five more. Um, I just wanted to tell you, you know, I'm sitting here in the middle of Manhattan, New York right now, participating in your meeting, and, and that is really, really powerful. And so I, I just want to support and also offer any of my knowledge, because IT and technology is my expertise, that we do provide these options for the community of, of Lake County, for the members of Lake County, because right now, it has been a savior and a need, but I foresee that in the future, we will be able to provide these, not just for forums like this, but also for the health and well-being of Lake County. And it is so impressive that Lake County continues to move forward and not miss, not miss or skip a beat in its legislation and how it practices because of these technologies. So I just wanted to share that in comment and, and tell you how much I appreciate it, because that's part of my job, is to try to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Marvin. Okay, Jake, do we have any other hands or anybody would like to make a comment? This is time to do it.
Mr. Chair, there was a member of the public who's listening to the meeting, but I don't believe has audio, and she emailed a comment. And the email, it comes from Betsy Khan, who I see in the room, but it does not have audio. And the comment is, "Great report on increased public participation and fantastic support for the public process by all staff. Signed, Betsy Khan."
Okay, thank you. Right, if there are no more comments from the room, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Thank you, Jake.
Uh, actually, I do have one more comment here. Melissa Fulton would like a moment.
Okay, go ahead, Melissa.
Sorry, I, I said.
There you go.
I, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I truly appreciate being able to attend these meetings, quote unquote, while continuing my work for the chamber and our members. It allows me to be productive in enhancing my knowledge of what is going on at the board level, hearing Dr. Pace's report. And I can still continue the work that I can't do if I come to the meetings in person. My ability to be able to make comments during the meeting is certainly appreciated. And so I, I think that in the future, as long as we can continue to attend via Zoom, that it certainly, in my opinion, improves my productivity. So thank you, everyone. And again, I appreciate being involved on behalf of our membership and my board, and I look forward to future meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your input. Thank you, Melissa. Okay, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board.
I just thought of something, too, Chairman. While she was, while she was speaking about that, it made me just kind of think about some of the different committee meetings that we have to attend out of town, you know, back when, you know, before COVID-19. And there was times when we would have to either cancel or adjust schedules or miss meetings in order to attend these type of functions. This is another alternative way to be able to attend in those type of situations, of course. I know CSAC sometimes has a different, you know, conflicting schedule meetings that we have to attend and, and others. So I, this might be another way that if we're traveling, like let's say to San Diego or something, and we're down there, we, we might be able to attend in this faction rather than missing the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, it's a new age, unbelievable. But yeah, everything we're offering, I think it's just a continuation and, you know, an advancement for us to get more public input, attend the meetings, like you said. So Carol, and the IT team, you know, I just, you know, whenever we talk about IT, I just want to thank everybody in IT and all of staff, everybody that helped us go virtual here. We've talked about it, you know, being a challenge in Lake County, but what we've done here, I, I do agree, has just been phenomenal. And the heavy lifting was done by our IT department and everybody getting this completed, and all of staff that has helped them get through that process. So I just want to thank our IT department in, in helping us complete this task with all the support from everyone else. So, including admin and, you know, everyone who got it done, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and certainly this is a priority. We're not talking about a long wait. We're, we're talking about taking the time necessary to do it right and make sure that, that it works well. The, um, the tech team meets again later this week. We've basically given them a week to brainstorm solutions to some of the technical challenges I raised. And, and then I'm also meeting with public services and, and my own key staff in the administrative office to work on some of the physical aspects of what is needed in the boardroom. So I'll continue to keep you posted and, and, and we'll have you operational in all forums as soon as we possibly can.
Okay, thank you. Um, there's no, Supervisor Scott?
You know, just for me, I think if we were to go back to normal on how we've always done everything, we have learned nothing from what we are doing right now. So definitely, we need to learn from what this process that we've been through, and we need to change the way we do things. And this Zoom has been absolutely amazing for our public to be able to participate with us. So this is definitely something I want to see continue, if we're allowed to do this under, you know, government guidelines, if they allow that.
Yeah. Okay, we'll bring it back. There's no action. This was a reporting only, no action to be taken. So we'll go ahead and move on with, with our next board agenda item. Item seven point three, consideration of a rescission of urgency ordinance number three zero nine one, establishing temporary safety protocols for county facilities to the public during the ongoing COVID-19 state of emergency.
So, Mr. Chair, I can introduce the item, and then you probably want to talk from there. I, I prepared this agenda item for you at your request, because you had, you know, brought to light the fact that at the time, the urgency ordinance for, I'll call it the masking ordinance, at, at the time that was put into place, urgency ordinance number three zero nine one, there was not a countywide order by the public health officer for essentially the same thing. Now that it, there is, you had raised the point that, that perhaps your board should take action to rescind the urgency ordinance, because it's no longer needed. So that is just this item.
So Carol, thank you for preparing this. Yes, I did bring this up, you know, to come onto the board so we could have a discussion. You know, Carol laid it out, but ultimately, I remember when we were having the discussion of doing the urgency ordinance, it was exactly for that reason. There wasn't a countywide, you know, masking issue and other things that were put in place, which is now. And what I would like to do is just fall in line with the public health officers' order, just as we've asked all of our businesses and, and other things to do. I think we should be kind of in, in step with those. I think Supervisor Sabatier also was addressing this a couple of meetings ago, you know, in conversation. So I just wanted to bring it to the board. I'm in complete agreement. We're asking folks to, business owners here in Lake County to do some things, and I think we should be right in line with them, moving along this process. And now that the health order's in place, I think this is a good time to have the discussion today and hopefully have some movement. So. Any discussion from the board?
Makes sense to move this way.
For me, I just want to hear from the public. I know there was some confusion around us, you know, no longer following this, and you know, what is that going to look like? So I just like to hear what the public has to say, and make sure we're clarifying and answering their questions.
Yeah. Okay, and I think we'll be prepared to do that. So any other board members want to make comment at this point? If not, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Okay, what department? So anybody, so go ahead and open up the room, please.
All right, I will unmute the floor here. The floor isn't muted. If you'd like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Uh, yes, Sally Peterson.
Um, hi, yes, um, I just wanted to say that, um, I just hope that we continue of going by the advice from Dr. Pace and continue in that route, rather than, um, you know, I certainly agreed with the letter that, um, asking for us as a county to be able to make our own decisions. But I just really want to make sure that we're still following Dr. Pace's advice to stay safe and healthy as well. Thank you.
And I guess the response that what we would be doing is just like we did when we fell in line with the, you know, with the governor's orders. We'd be falling in line as far as county government with Dr. Pace's public health order that's out there right now. And so everybody would be treated equally and following the same rules.
Mr. Chair, I might add that the addendum that Dr. Pace did with respect to his order for face coverings e- essentially embodied all of the key elements of the urgency ordinance.
Yeah. Thank you very much for that clarification, Carol.
And I also wanted to offer, I mean, certainly it may be somewhat confusing to the public when it is heard that this ordinance was rescinded. If you do take action to rescind it, we'll make sure that we clarify that with a simple press release, because the requirements would still very much be in place by virtue of the order.
Yes. Okay, any more comment from the room? Anybody online here? Okay, hearing none and seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to rescind urgency ordinance number thirty ninety-one, establishing, or I'll stop right there. That way, it doesn't confuse that we're establishing. That way it doesn't confuse that we're establishing them. We're rescinding ordinance number thirty ninety-one.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Go ahead and call for the roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott? Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item seven point four, we'll move on to item seven point four. Consideration of a resolution, further amending resolution two zero one nine seven nine to clarify the procedures used in the collection of taxes due to pursuant to the Lake County Cannabis Cultivation Tax Ordinance.
Mr. Chair, uh, it's my understanding that this is gonna be a, a presentation of Anita Grant and Patrick Sullivan.
Okay. We'll be, I don't know who wants to start, uh, but we'll go ahead and turn it over to Anita and uh Patrick if they're on the line.
Well, I hope Patrick is somewhere on the line, Mr. Chair. This is Anita. He had prepared the, he had prepared the, the memorandum and it was his factual predicate that was the basis for me drafting the resolution. The resolution's goal here, and certainly this is gonna be subject to, as always, review and comment by your board and any changes uh clarifications you may wish, is essentially, again, just to clarify what your board had directed staff with regard to the, the accrual of tax, which is at any point in a year, should uh a person become engaged in cannabis cultivation that's subject to tax, that tax would accrue. And you'll see listed here uh, uh, the bottom of page one, one, two, three. Those are the main points and provisions that are sought to be clarified with the recital simply giving the, the just an explanatory history of what had occurred before. And with that, I will leave it to the capable hands of Patrick if he has something to add.
Hi, this is Patrick. Sorry, I was having a, a moment of technical difficulty there. But um, no, I, I don't really have anything further to add. Uh, the only real additional point that was in here was the, the revision to the uh cannabis opt-out form, which was giving cultivators until June first, based off the original deadline we had to submit that. Um, I know we've heard multiple concerns from cultivators. Uh, I know some of this related to the fallout from the COVID nineteen pandemic, that they are in the middle of trying to figure out uh what's going on. Some of them have had difficulty accessing their business, their records, other staff. So we did put in um this, the suggestion to move that deadline to June fifteenth as a way to accommodate that. So if there are any changes that arose out of this resolution, if anyone wanted to take a different action, um, that would give any cultivator the opportunity to essentially start their cultivation operation in January instead of this year. And with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Uh, any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and um open it up to uh, open it up to the room. Jake?
All right, so I'll mute the floor here. Uh, if you'd like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, uh, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Sabatier?
I, I, I want to thank uh staff for bringing this back. Um, I know that uh I had argued uh in our previous session back in March that uh uh, a season of grow is a season of grow and they shouldn't be paying a portion of uh their taxes, that the people did not vote for partial payments. They voted for a tax. And so I think this is fair. I think this is accurate. And I think this is what everybody who voted on measure C was anticipating would occur, and I think this is perfect.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll bring it back for uh action of the board.
I offer the resolution.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to our item seven point one, uh weekly reports and calendars. Go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
Um, just uh kind of back up a little bit. Yesterday, we had a Middle Creek Restoration Project Committee meeting. And uh there will be some uh upcoming board agenda items uh coming out of that committee and uh the Water Resources staff in a couple of weeks. So excited to see some of those uh updates and changes. Uh, tomorrow in the morning, we have an LTA APC meeting. Um, and just to be transparent, there, there, um, while there's no issues that have been set on the table, there's, just like anyone else, we're worried about the, the revenue that is coming in. Uh, LTA and APC are very much based off of gas tax and with a lot of people uh driving a whole lot less uh due to COVID nineteen. Um, it's, it's uh, it's gonna be a little bit rocky in the coming months and we'll see how that all works out. Um, on Thursday in the evening, there's a Clear Lake City Council meeting. And uh, looks like so far I'm fairly free until the following, on the eighth. Um, meeting with Carol, it looks like is the only thing I have on my calendar so far, but I'm sure that things will add on as the week goes. And then back here on the ninth, for Tuesday meeting.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Uh, Supervisor Scott?
Um, this afternoon I have calls with constituents. Um, tomorrow, we're try, trying to plan a meeting for the juvenile hall, but it looks like those times might be moving around. So my schedule might have to move around. I have an eleven o'clock with um Hope Rising and noon with the Health Department on the fourth. Um, I'll be dealing with some family issues in the morning. And then I have a COC meeting in the afternoon at three o'clock. On Friday at ten o'clock, I have um another Hope Rising meeting. On the, the eighth, um, executive Hope Rising meeting in the morning. And then uh, a West Shore Rec Center meeting in the afternoon and then back here on Tuesday.
Okay, Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, uh, today I'm finishing up on a, some tasks, of course, stemming from yesterday's Middle Creek Restoration uh committee meeting and then also some, some activity that I've uh had to conduct with some folks out in Spring Valley. Uh, some of, for some of those, um, and some other constituents. So I've just been working on a lot of that this week, um, because they all seem to be coming in at once. It's fine though. Um, and then uh luckily after today, I, I mean, today, since there's a lot of clear things going on, I can take care of those. But tomorrow, COVID recovery at two PM. Um, Thursday, there's another COVID recovery meeting, uh, I think at four PM that I attend. Friday, Blue Collar Committee, uh, Monday, a meeting with Carol. And then um, back here next week, uh, for the Board Supervisor meeting on the ninth.
Okay, Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, so um, I've got meetings with uh some constituents um on a project up on Cobb and uh, on uh tomorrow. And then Thursday, we have the uh, I'll be meeting up on Cobb in the morning, but I have um the deal uh meeting with Caltrans Thursday um in the morning, late morning. And then on Friday, I have the Blue Collar Committee and uh back, back here on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. Uh, as said, uh, agenda review after the meeting today. And then um Wednesday, Lake Transit Authority Area Planning Council with Supervisor Sabatier. Uh, he gave a good report on uh what we're dealing with uh there. But um, we've got some great folks who are working through that and I know, uh, we'll keep everybody informed. Uh, the recovery group at two PM on uh Wednesday. On Thursday, South Deal Committee meeting, it is uh all teleconference uh stuff. On Friday, uh, I have the Health Department, the DOC call in the morning. Don't have anything there. Um, and then that evening, uh, Middletown High School will be doing a virtual graduation. And my son will be graduating, so we'll be doing that. Um, and then uh Saturday, I don't have anything, um, Sunday and, you know, I'll go back to Tuesday. After meeting today, I will be going out and visiting a couple more businesses that I got complaints on that I haven't been able to get ahold of. Uh, so we'll go and visit with them. And then uh Monday have uh the um our Lake County Redevelopment Agency meeting have uh in, uh, well, it's gonna be virtual. Uh, but we have another meeting. I think that's good. Uh, redevelopment uh has really been moving forward. I know Clear Lake is trying to get some projects done and other things. So uh, we'll be meeting on those uh things as uh redevelopment agency. Um, so, uh, and then back here on Tuesday. Okay, and that's it. Um, go ahead and read our that concludes all the items on the agenda for today and we'll go into closed session. We have one item, conference with legal counsel, exist eight point one. Conference legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D one. FERC project number seventy-seven, Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project. And with that, we'll conclude today's meeting and go into closed session.
Mr. Chair, uh, could we take a minute break and start closed session?